I would like to call this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee to order at 6:30 PM. Do notice having been posted. Let the record show that this meeting is being electronically recorded. And if anyone in the audience also wishes to electronically record this meeting, you should notify the committee at this time. Any such recording may be subject to reasonable restrictions imposed by the chair to the extent permitted under the open meeting law.
Alan Zarek, U.S.N.R.
Thank you. Roll call. Mr. Larabee?
Here.
Mr. Giliducci?
Here.
Mrs. Field?
Yeah.
Mr. Machado?
Here.
And the chair is present. We have a quorum. We expect that Mrs. Gagliardi will be here very shortly. And Mrs. Tara is not feeling well this evening, and we don't expect her to be able to attend. In addition, we have with us this evening our Superintendent of Schools Jeffrey Schoonover, a Director of Business and Finance Lindsay Albinaz, and our Director of Building and Grounds Carlos Campus, and our Recording Secretary Robin Vaccaro, and also our High School Principal David Lanziski. I think that is everyone. I would ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next scheduled meeting will be Thursday, September 14th at 6:30 PM at the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. I will not be able to attend the next meeting, so Mr. Larabee will preside at that meeting. And I may be able to call in to the meeting remotely, and I'll give the appropriate notice. We, as a result of discussion at our retreat, we've changed the format of our agenda. We may still be tweaking it, but we've decided to establish a new format for our agenda. The first section will focus on student achievement, teaching and learning; the second section on budget and financial matters; the third on policy; and the fourth, other matters and information. So, we'll, starting with tonight's meeting, we'll begin with student achievement, teaching and learning. And we have with us this evening representatives of the Best Buddies, officers and members who are going to tell us about their recent trip to the National Conference, or perhaps International Conference. And so I'd like to introduce Autumn Ray Ray, who is the President of our Somerset Berkeley Best Buddies Chapter. And Autumn, if you'll come up, why don't you come right up with everyone and introduce the people who are with you, and then you'll have the floor.
All right. So, hi, I'm Autumn. I'm going into my senior year here, and I'm the chapter president for our new Somerset Berkeley Best Buddies Chapter. And this year is...
I'm Gina Gagliardi. I'm also into my senior year, and I will be the co-Vice President for Best Buddies this year.
I am Tim Gagliario. I'll be attending the Ice Program as long as the English. High school student here at Somerset, and also involved in the Best Buddies.
Great.
I'm Arianna Jason. I'm going into my senior year, and I'm the secretary.
I'm Jackie Rosario. I'm going into my sophomore year, and I'm also co-Vice President.
Yeah, so about a month ago, we went to Indiana for the International Leadership Conference. And there we did, as we said before we went, we were going to do a bunch of workshops and get to know a lot of people from around the world, and see how they run their chapters. And we definitely learned like a lot more than what we thought we would there. We got to experience so much, like amazing stuff. Um, yeah. What else? Do you want to talk about?
Sure. So, on the first night, they had their opening ceremonies, which kind of opens a chapter for the next year. And the theme was Pass the Torch, which kind of fits our chapter, because we might be seniors, but we'll pass the torch to Jack, maybe others next year. So I think opening ceremonies was my favorite part. What was your favorite part, too?
My favorite part was meeting a lot of new people. We met people from other states, and with all of that, yeah, I know a lot of fun.
Um, there was this, I don't know, like, I don't know what to call it, kind of like a, well, the whole thing was a conference, but there was this thing called the World's Cafe. And we got to meet people from all of those states. And we sat at this round table of like maybe eight or to 10 of us. And we got to like see how they run their chapters, and we got to basically know them. And, yeah, it was cool.
I honestly just liked everything, because the amount of like love and passion there that was just made everything exciting, and it was cool to like meet new people and stuff.
So we actually made a video with like the overview of the whole weekend and things that we did. It goes through most of it. There's definitely like a few things that are out on, but, because like we didn't record the workshops, but other than that, it goes through just what happened when we got there, like the opening ceremonies, and everything else that we left. So, this is, I don't know.
So this is day two of the Best Buddies Leadership Conference. And, yeah, we're excited.
Choose the love, it's simple. Choose the love, what you do with it. I'm going to inspire you. I'm going to empower you to dream bigger than you have ever dreamt before.
I can't be named, a tiger's waiting to be a tiger singing. You. Confusion never stops, closing walls and ticking clocks. Come back and take it home. I could not stop, but she knows, singing. Come out upon my sees.
I'm feeling fine. To Billy Lee, never, never would, but now I...
Hi, everyone. We're the Somerset Berkeley Best Buddy Officers. And we just went to Indiana for the Best Buddies Leadership Conference, and here's more.
I like making new friends, and I've come out of my shell, because I was novice. One trip is key.
To success.
To success.
Um, I loved learning a lot at the Leadership Conference. I definitely learned a lot about obviously leadership and responsibility, and also like talking and meeting new people, and like how to make like really meaningful contact with others.
All you have to do is be a friend. That's learning the whole of love. It's just friendship.
One thing I really liked was the energy and enthusiasm from everyone, because it just made it so fun, and everybody loved each other. And, yeah, it was just exciting. But we can learn the amount of love and passion that was at this conference to Somerset, and just makes Somerset so much more fun to be at, and just make life so much easier at school.
All right. So what I really loved about the Leadership Conference is how much everyone came together when there was a presentation. One of my personal favorites, her name is Lisa, and she did ASL, American Sign Language, to different songs, and she was kind of like a dancer and interpreter all at the same time. And she did a performance with a woman who was playing the piano. And it was just really inspiring to me to see that no matter what has happened, that you can overcome anything. And I really also love meeting people from around the country and around the world at things like the World Cafe, so you can see all different events that other people are doing. So it was awesome, and I can't wait to go back next year.
I do, too. We can spread our message of inclusion to everyone.
One thing that I really loved about the Best Buddies Leadership Conference was getting the opportunity to speak to people from all over, and get to hear how they started their chapter, how they run it. That's really helpful to know, and I can't wait to take all that and reach back again. It's our virtue.
Yes, Arianna, just reaches back and grabs my feet.
All right. We are here, build great friendships, and just become all buddies.
All for one, and one for all.
Well said.
So where do we get big buddy T-shirts? Do you sell them?
We actually, as part of like a fundraiser that we can do to either help our chapter, help this state, fundraiser, is we can order like a bunch of shirts and then sell them to other people like that don't want to run from our school or something, to represent. That's our T-shirt. Yeah.
Okay, we'll get some big sizes. Lanziski needs a big size. It's for my big heart.
So I just want to thank you for what you're doing. I think that you are amazing ambassadors for the culture at this school and what you're doing. And I think it's a true testament to what we're trying to achieve here at Somerset Berkeley. So thank you for all of your efforts. I know starting something is never easy. How many volunteers do you anticipate having through the year? Does it start just with a board such as yourself, and then you gather more volunteers? How does that work?
Yeah, um, so that's the goal, is to keep drawing some chapter, whether we have more volunteers, more members. So right now, it's just us and our advisors, and a few of our students that are signed up to be members. And once school starts, and once we get the word out more, we hope to gather more people to either volunteer our events or participate in them.
And is there any, and forgive me for this, I shouldn't probably notice, is there any crossover between Best Buddies and Unified Sports?
Definitely.
Yeah. So you guys, even though you're two separate organizations, you can do things in conjunction with one another, and kind of grow that community. Good.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
You did Somerset proud.
Thank you.
You should talk to Mr. Austin, maybe he can get Tom Brady down here. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for asking, for having us.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right. So the next item we have on the agenda is the Marching Band Request to Attend the National Championship in Allentown, Pennsylvania. Mr. Marshall is here. We have a very detailed presentation, as we've come to expect from him.
Very true. Thank you. Well, with the onset of the school year right around the corner, I appreciate the time inviting me here to talk about the Marching Band. This year, they closed 34 members, and you've got the packet there. We're looking at a four-day, three-night tour with suburban tours. And we would leave on Thursday afternoon, right after school. We would ask that they miss Friday, and the reason being is because when we, we didn't do, we did this last year as well. When we leave on Friday after school, that doesn't give them enough time to get a practice in and get themselves prepared, since they have a big, long travel day, and they perform early in the morning. So that allows us to do that, but still only miss one day of school by leaving after school on Thursday. This year, the two championships that we go to are on the same weekend. That happened to us about, I think it was four years ago. And that was because of a change in venue that they told us about three weeks beforehand, so we had plenty of time to prepare for that this time around with our tour company. The National Championships is on Saturday, and the New England Championships for the New England Scholastic Band Association is in Lawrence, Massachusetts, the following day. So we've worked it out with them, and what's great about the tour company is that they've gone through everything with DOT hours and how long a bus driver is allowed. So what we're going to do is after our performance on Saturday, we'll travel to Milford, Connecticut, and stay at the Hilton Garden Inn there, and then leave that morning to go to Lawrence, and then they'll be back home after that. So again, it's two nights in Allentown, one night in Milford, Connecticut. There is a correction there. If you look at the preliminary itinerary, I think it says 5:30 AM, report to band room. No, no, no. That's supposed to be 2:30 PM, right after school. But everything else there on the preliminary itinerary is as we planned, so that their travel day is on Thursday, Friday. They've got a little bit of downtime, rehearsal time, and too bad, early enough to prepare themselves for two straight days of season-ending competition. All the accounting and financing, once again this year, is going through the school activities account, the marching band activities account, as we did last year. So with that, if everything is there, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. And Mr. Giliducci, did you enjoy your time the other night?
I just wanted to make, I want to make one comment. Those kids were unbelievable. For two and a half hours, they never stopped, except they get a drink of water.
And they run to...
I was tired.
And they run till the water break.
I was more tired than them. But they were phenomenal.
Great.
And I loved the program with the boat and everything, so, Ari, I know you're going to be...
Our show this year is called The Voyage.
Yes.
And it kind of chronicles a 15th-century vessel going out to explore uncharted territory. And so I spent two weeks this summer building a boat that 12 feet wide, long, seven feet wide, and it has a mast that goes up 10 feet in the air, and we've incorporated that into our show. So there was at one point, one year, where the judges said we didn't give them enough general effect. I got general effect. So, yeah, Mr. Giliducci was at the Friends and Family Night. We invited all of the parents and family of the marching band members to our last night of band camp, to the rehearsal, so that they can see, well, what goes on in a marching band rehearsal. And so that was kind of the idea for them to see how it works, with half the staff up top in the box, so that they can give group instruction, and the other half is on the field with the kids, giving individual instruction. So that's how we put together such a detailed show in a short period of time.
They were great.
Yeah.
All your assistants were really...
I appreciate that.
And the kids were phenomenal.
There's no lack of humor at a rehearsal, either.
No, no.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I noticed there you have like nine staff members, seven to 10 parent chaperones, and I guess you're going through the two-to-one ratio. I noticed that the students have a cost, family, a delta. Are the staff members allowed to go per like the profit of like, well, not profit, but do they have to pay for their own transportation, or are they automatically...
Their own meals.
They pay for their meals, sort of like, very good.
All right. And I always ask, has the principal reviewed this? It seems like there are plenty of chaperones, but that's your...
I think going one-to-one on, you have to add the chaperone would be a little extreme. I think three-to-one is a good number.
All right. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal to attend the US Bands National High School Marching Band Division 1A Championships at Allentown, Pennsylvania, and also the New England Championship at Lawrence, Massachusetts.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? The absence of discussion, all was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous.
I thank you very much for your time, and I will report back to you on how well the marching band does this season. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Student Representative Report. We will have that item on all of our agendas, but we don't have a student representative appointed yet, so we'll just move over that item. Superintendent's Report.
Yes, I have placed a update, a memo in front of each of you with just a few items here. One, I want to give you an update on our staffing. We do have a few new hires that I wanted to share some information about them with you. In special education, we have a new special ed teacher, Molly Keith. She's coming to us from the North River Collaborative, where she's been for the past nine years. Prior to that, I think she spent about nine years at the Cardinal Cushing Center as well, so she has extensive experience in special education. She has her master's, Master of Education degree in special ed from Bridgewater State University. We have two new science teachers.
Can I just ask, what is, what will her role be?
She will be in the, one of the sub-separate classes, 18 to 22, or...
No, it's the other one.
Okay, mostly upperclassmen.
Right.
Upperclassmen, but I'm not sure if it's split out exactly in grades 11 and 12, but one of the sub-separate classes that we have here. Maureen Champagne is our new physics teacher. She has a unique background, where she has taught physics at Old Rochester Regional High School. But she did that a few years ago, and following that, she taught physics in both Costa Rica for a year and in Switzerland for a year. So she has some international experience doing that. She has her Bachelor of Science in Chemistry with several other minors in Biology and Math. And obviously, being a physics teacher, she has extensive physics background. Then she has her Master of Arts in Teaching also from UMass Darmouth. Kyle Homberg is our new chemistry teacher. He is a recent graduate of Western New England University with a degree in Chemistry, and last year he did his student teaching at East Long Meadow High School. We have a new music teacher, Stephanie Isidoro. This is the position that is split between the two school districts. So it's a .2 position for the high school, a .3 position for Somerset Public. Now, she's been teaching at St. Mary Academy Payview, which is in, I think it's Riverside, Rhode Island. She's been there for the past 10 years. She has her Bachelor of Science in Music Education from URI, and a Master's in Music Education from Kent State University. In addition to those four teachers, we do have some other staff. We have three power professionals, Kelsey Cardozo, Tammy Hippolito, and Zachary McGarra, as well as two new custodians, Jonathan Taylor and Jeff Borges. Any questions on the staffing before I move on? We do have an unfilled position right now. We had a resignation in our science department late last week, so there is a position that's already been posted. Actually, I give a lot of credit to Mr. Lanziski and Mr. Talbot. They've already found what we believe is a qualified, you know, very qualified candidate, but it's just, like, just checking some other things. But I'll be able to report that to you at our next meeting. Just some upcoming events. We don't have a lot happening really at the beginning of the school year, but we do have our Fall Athletics Wellness Night happening next Tuesday, which is the first night of school. So that's September 5th, at 6:00 PM, Performing Arts Center. And the reason why we're having it then is the first, our sports are actually starting a little bit earlier this year, now that we're in the South Coast Conference. The athletic schedule begins right away. In fact, when you flip it over, you can see all of the games that we have on the Wednesday. So because of that, we really had no other option but to have the Wellness Night on the first night of school. The focus that night, Mr. Francis, has had someone from the Brain Injury Association of Massachusetts coming in to speak to our students and families about concussions and brain injuries. And along with that, he is actually going to have one of our students, a current student who suffered a concussion a few years ago, and she's going to talk about her experience through that process that kept our sports for a significant amount of time, actually. So I did want to just share with the committee and the public some of the first home games, if you want to catch a game next week. As I said, we start on Wednesday. We have home games for girls soccer, volleyball, and golf. Golf happens between the Swansea Country Club. On Friday, the 8th, we have our first field hockey home game, and that's our first football game. It is away at Durfee High School. I think it's at 7 o'clock on the 8th. And on Saturday, September 9th, we have our freshman JV football teams having home games, as well as our JV and varsity boy soccer game. So there'll be a lot of activity happening here on Saturday morning and early afternoon on the 9th. With that, keeping with an update on athletics, I did want to share with you, particularly because of our user fees, I know there were some concerns about the impact of fees on participation. So you can see as of today, the numbers. So we have these, the sport, and then the total numbers participating in each sport as of right now. And in parentheses to the right of that, those were the numbers last year. So you can, you can see how the sports compare. So football is up significantly. I think we have, it's about 35, 30, about 35 or so, give or take, a few freshmen who have come out, which is a fairly large group there. Well, I think that's really making up that, a big part of that increase. Soccer, girls, 36. Boys, same number as last year, that did involve 10 cuts. We had 52 students come out for boy soccer. The only boys' sport that did face some cuts this year. Volleyball, we're at 38. Last year was a 41. I have cuts, there were some there, but I don't have the number. I don't think it was a large number, but 38, it's about what we can hold for the teams. Cross-country, we're up one. Boys cross-country, we're down one. Cheerleading is about the same, three fewer than last year. Field hockey, we're actually down 10 from where we were last year. But that field hockey number of 40, that was the largest number that the school had had in a while. We actually graduated 13 seniors in that sport. And golf, we're at 20 last year, or 21. So when you combine everything, we had 324 students participating in fall sports last year. As of today, we have 324, same number. That number might decrease as kids, there might be some dropouts between now and the first games, but it's at least, it's nice to see that that number is exactly the same as it was last year. And the other piece of information I want to share with you, you have this other document that Robin gave to you. It says student profile verification on one side, health profile verification on the other. On the first day of school, this is something that Mr. Machado is familiar with, I shared this with the Somerset Public Schools Committee last week. On the first day of school, in our homerooms throughout the two districts, students get these pretty thick packets, and they had been for years. We've trimmed it down the past few years as we put more things online. But one of the things, if you are a parent of students in the district, so Mrs. Field will know, we get these, as parents, we receive these packets, and we have to fill out information for all of our, any, all the children that we have in district. And I know it's one of the things I do not look forward to every year, that first night of school. This year, we are using Aspen, so we are printing out forms, showing all the information that we currently have in the system, and we're asking families to review it and to either mark changes or to check the box, no changes, no changes off on the right-hand side. So one, this will be, I hope, welcomed by our families, by our parents who are always filling these out, but also by our administrative assistants, who then take all of those packets and have to go through it. So this should be much more efficient in getting information into Aspen, corrections anyway, in a much more reasonable amount of time than we've had before. And on the backside, where it says health profile verification, it's a similar form where we have just the health information that we have about our students, we're just asking parents to review that rather than filling out all that information over and over again. So with that, I think our next item is school improvement plan. We can turn it over to Mr. Lanziski, unless you have some questions about any of that information.
I just was going to ask, could, for the next meeting, could we have kind of a report on where we, how the process for athletic activity fees went? We should know by then how the whole process, online process and payment and all of that went.
Sure.
So with that, Mr. Lanziski?
So toward the end of, you can't if you like.
So toward the end of, you can if you like. So toward the end of last year, we thought it was really prudent that we change a little bit how we've done a school improvement plan. A lot of times, schools are doing school improvement plans starting right now. By the time you get it finished, you're about a quarter of the way through the school year, which then leaves you less time to actually accomplish the things in the plan. So we said, let's do this a little smarter. So what we did was, we had our school, school council work on this with me and develop the plan. So that way, right off the bat, in September, we were ready to go. And that's what we did. So here are the members of the school council. You can see there are teachers, administrators, parents, all who were involved. Very dedicated group who showed up first Wednesday of every month. There's my plug, so if anybody would like to be on the school advisory council, please send in a letter of interest to me so that we can have an election if so needed. So section one talks about the school strategic plan. This is something that, in collaboration with Mr. Schoonover, has been developed. And it talks about our objectives that are there. There are four. Enhance student learning by creating a personalized, student-centered learning environment in which every student has a school-issued device to use in school and at home. Objective two, provide targeted, individualized professional development for all staff. Objective three, effectively use data to inform practice, provide targeted interventions, and make data-driven decisions. Objective four, use multiple communication strategies with SBRHS families and the community to provoke positive events and successes of the school. Section two talks about the connections between the district and the school strategic plan and evaluation system. You can see those highlighted there of how they fit into what we're trying to do. Section three talks about our action plans. So the first objective talks about, again, it's basically the idea of going one-to-one and giving every kid a device and teachers being able to change how they teach by being able to speed up the instruction and be able to get to some of the 21st century skills that are so needed nowadays. So the action step one, I am the lead person, it's getting the one-to-one devices. August 2017 distribution, when this was created, that was the plan. You know, with every great plan, there's always a little stumbling block or a hurdle to step over. So we are doing that currently. We are in the process of gathering the devices and getting them ready. And right now, we are hoping for a rollout sometime mid-October and hopefully the latest early November. For teachers, the PD is really starting right away. And what we're doing is, we're, we want teachers to use their common planning time to talk to each other and develop lessons and really be creative and look at what the internet has to offer. Well, how can you create a lesson different than what you've always done, using the devices differently? And so the teachers will be able to be in their small groups. Many of the groups, the majority of the groups are inside the same content so they can strategize and say, hey, you know, I have a great lesson, I use this, I use that, and they can share ideas. It's a way to really foster that educational communication and really pull together the staff. And we have some other plans to really expand on that, but we want to start a little small. And as we go through, what we want to do with the content coordinators is really start looking at the data, look at the analysis, see how many times, how well this is being used, what's been effective, what hasn't worked. Some of the greatest things that's going to happen are things that are tried and failed and which they will lead us to seven more successes because we found a failure, and that's okay. And that's what we're encouraging our teachers to do, is to go out and try. And if it doesn't work, that's all right, learn from it and get better and stronger from it. Objective two, talks about our targeted, individualized personality plans for all. For us, we do have our PD plan. It has been shared with central office. I did share with the policy subcommittee the other day. It's been shared with content coordinators, teachers also have it, it'll be addressed tomorrow. And it outlines two major focus for us, which is, one, instruction using technology, and two, common assessments. And the common assessments allows us to gather data so that can drive our decision-making and tell us really where we need to improve and how we can do that. So the plan talks about us getting the detailed plan together. That is complete and it has been distributed. Teacher surveys, we want to find out how we did with that plan toward the end. We want the teachers to tell us, what are you looking for? What is meaningful? Did this work, did this not work? We did the same kind of a format for our advisory with the students. And we allow the students' feedback to inform what we're doing this year for advisory. We want to do the same thing with the professional development. So toward the end, middle or end of this year, talk to the teachers, was this what you were looking for? Is this something you feel you still need? Take that information and then start that up for the process for next year. If I can do? Sure. In your packets, you do have this form, if you haven't seen it, which shows the, the plan for the early release days, common planning time, and the full day in November. So what Mr. Lanzinski's referring to, you have? Objective three talks about using the data for targeted interventions. This really is about us having common assessments for mid-years, finals, and for some departments even inside regular terms or units. And this way, teachers will be able to compare what's happening and it can look at their instruction. I'll give you a quick example. When I was content coordinator, we were looking at MCAS data. And when we were looking at MCAS data, there was one topic called line of best fit that for some reason, students just didn't do well. And we all looked at it as a department and said, this is this one item that, for some reason, it's such an easy topic, why isn't it done well? We took it and then moved it toward the end of the year to say, well, maybe it's just because it's so easy, they just kind of forget about it because we do it so early. And then because of that, we were able to see improvements in that data line, for that analysis. So that's some of the types of items that we're going to look at. Now, the classes that don't have MCAS tied to them, we'll be using their common assessments. We'll be using other things such as mid-years and finals to really gather that data and then look at it. Yep?
So if they don't have, are you talking about common assessments that have been developed between, if they, teachers teaching the same class?
Correct. Everybody who's teaching the same course, there'll be some assessments that are the same, no matter which course, whether you're in Mr. Pettys or Mr. Correia's, it's the same exact test so that we can go back and look at the data and see what that is. A lot of times, it's that mid, it's mid-years or finals, but sometimes it might be a lip review on something. It may be a special question, depends on what the department's wanting to use. And objective four, use multiple communication strategies. Last year was my newsletter and I got positive feedback about the newsletter that we started last year. Want to try to, I felt like every time we put one out, it got a little better and better. It's to try to improve on that. Trying to get better with some of the social media sites and get where the people are. More people are looking at Twitter and Instagram and things of that nature. Clearly, Facebook is popular in this, in the both towns. So looking at ways to try to use those in a positive forum and try to promote the school through that. We also want to start looking out to Mr. Austin, who's sitting there, about trying to have us highlight some of the really great accomplishments. And I will give kudos to Mr. Austin. He's been wonderful. Every time we call, he shows up, brings his camera and his five notebooks and, you know, takes his article notes as he goes. And, and he's been a wonderful asset to Somerset Public Regional High School to show a lot of the wonderful things that our kids are doing. Yes?
I had, in looking at that, was there any thought given to capitalizing on the TV studio to highlight some of those activities as well?
I wanted to, I didn't have an opportunity to necessarily sit with Tara Peckham, who's in charge of the TV studio, and I didn't want to overburden her by making a claim inside of this that maybe she felt the kids weren't ready for yet. That'll be something that I'll be able to have that conversation with her this year and then look to expand that in future years. And plan, section four talks about plan for assessing and reporting the school progress. And that's really for us to be monitoring this as we go, see what's successful. Everything we do here, we look at and we try to find, you know, what worked, what didn't work. If something did work, how can we use those same attributes in some other program that we want to run? If something didn't work, why not? Where did it trip up? How can we make it better? And so we, we examine ourselves every time, no matter what we do. It's from everything as simple as a fire drill to something like this. We always, after something happens, we sit down as a group, talk about it, see what it is. This didn't work, that didn't work, make these changes, and next time, let's evaluate it from there. So it's a never-changing process. So that is the school improvement plan.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No questions? I don't think this requires any action on the part of the committee. So thank you, Mr. Lanzinski, for that presentation. All right, now we'll move on to budget and financial matters. And as much as I'd like to address the first item, I'll leave it to Mr. Larabee to talk about this.
So the special town meeting was held in the town of Berkeley last night. There were three articles for the townspeople to consider. The first article was the high school assessment, which passed unanimously.
So said the moderator.
So said the moderator.
I guess his word prevails.
So we finally made it to the end of the budget process. And thankfully, the voters in Berkeley passed the assessment. So I'm very pleased, as I think all of my colleagues here are as well. So we'll begin the process of trying to find a longer-term solution in Berkeley immediately. I'm scheduled to come back to our board of selectmen in early October to discuss parameters around a second override request.
So in addition to Mr. Larabee and Mr. Villaducci, I was at the meeting along with Mr. Schoonover and Mrs. Albernaz. We seem to do far better at Berkeley town meetings than we do at an override elections because the first time around, it was nearly unanimous. And the second time around, at least in the judgment of the moderator, it was unanimous. So that's a great step forward. And I was very concerned because I thought I might have to cancel my vacation if we were to face with the next step of the budget process.
No one said anything.
That's right, there was no, there was no discussion, no objection, so.
Well, we did make it publicly known in Berkeley that your vacation was tied to the passage of the budget.
Rick, but you're not going to put up any money for that.
So does anyone else? So now we can move forward with, with the budget and perhaps some of the positions that we've been holding off on and go forward with. And some other programs like the one-on-one initiative that we've also been on hold. So does anyone else have any thoughts or comments?
Chairman Pierce, I was just wondering if the committee would entertain, just going out of order on the agenda, tomorrow is the first day of school and we have Principal Lanzinski here. If we could possibly take the policy items next?
So I'll call on you, Mrs. Field, to at least introduce these policy proposals.
So the first one that you have for review, there are three documents, all pertaining to the acceptable use policy. These three documents, the acceptable use policy, the sign-off document, and the care and needs form, all relate to the one-to-one initiative, as Mr. Lanzinski said, that the district hopes to rule out this fall. The policy subcommittee did meet to review the memo that was presented to the school committee at the June meeting. And as a result of that, there have been some changes to the policy, the acceptable use policy. You also provided with the professional development schedule, as was referenced in the improvement plan in our previous agenda item, and also for clarification around cellphone language. The policy subcommittee did have dialogue with administration. This acceptable use policy is geared strictly towards school-issue devices. You'll see in this policy that there is a cellphone policy that is, will be referred in the handbook. There was some dialogue regarding a discrepancy with the cellphone policy as to what we had currently in the handbook and what had been approved at previous meetings. So the school committee, the policy subcommittee will be reviewing a separate cellphone policy.
Electronic device policy.
Electronic device policy. That will then come forward to the school committee for review. So the policy that you have here is for the school-issue devices. And Mr. Lanzinski is here to answer any questions that we might have.
So I see the reference to the cellphone policy. That's going to be a separate policy. It's not going to be the one that we currently have because that will be modified in light of the fact that we now have these devices that will be used consistently, available for consistent use in the classroom. So we no, no longer need the cellphones to have kind of an ad hoc use policy. Is that correct?
Once we have the devices.
Right.
So what we want to try to do is that, for right now, we allow the teachers to do it for now.
Right.
Till once we have devices, then there's no need for devices inside the classroom anymore.
So, but we'll be able to, because that's the timeline for that, you had mentioned the in October?
That is our, our goal.
Of the goal. But in the meantime, the, the policy subcommittee is going to look at some different language for those modifications. So that when October, or whenever the magical date is that we have those given out, they'll be on alert to everyone to, within an already-approved policy regarding cellphone use.
At that point, once that policy gets put in, I will have to take a copy of it, email that to all of the students to make sure that they're seeing it. It will get updated then on the, the website as part of the handbook. And that way, everybody, much like we did with the attendance policy last year. Because it won't, it won't quite be ready for the beginning of the school year. So we're going to have to throw, put an addendum in.
Are you concerned that that's going to be difficult to implement after already starting the year?
I think with the one-to-one devices coming in, it's a game changer. And I think it, when you kind of roll it in to that whole idea of, here's the devices, these are everything in due, we no longer need the phones. We always wanted the phones because it allowed us to amplify what we were doing. These devices do it for us. There's a lot of that, and we'll get explained to the students as we go through.
Thank you.
I was, I was able to locate the policy. I don't know whether Robin located this as well, but I managed to dig through my own archive and come up with the policy that we approved, I think in thirteen.
It was April of twenty thirteen.
Yeah. So, and I'm, having looked at it quickly, I'm less concerned. I thought there might be a discrepancy, I'm less concerned about it, but the policy subcommittee will certainly take a look at it.
Thank you.
Now, if I can ask Mr. Lanzinski, on, the pages aren't numbered here, but it's under the section, use of the network. Where it says, number two, students are not allowed to bring in their own computing devices. Any non-district-owned devices will not be allowed to connect to the school network. But that, I'm assuming that will go into effect upon the distribution of the one-to-one. So should this policy not go into effect until that point? I'm, I'm just wondering because if, if the school committee adopts it, I know even if we have the understanding right now, but I'm, I'm just wondering if this should only... That becomes a very cumbersome for us for act, for the actual rollout. Because our goal is to have the acceptable, acceptable use policy sent to parents starting now so that we can start collecting them, tracking, to make sure that every student has turned this in by the time we have the devices. If we wait till the moment that we have devices, it becomes a very quick turnaround for us to try to track everything and get everything for those purposes. So I'm just wondering if...
Do we currently allow students to bring in their, say, their own Apple and connect to the system? So are you planning on allowing them to continue to do that until?
Until the devices come in. So I'm just wondering if for number two, for that one statement, I think that might be the only one that is really a concern for me if... Can we add a line, a little clause in front of that, say, upon the delivery of the devices to the students? And add that line into number two, something to that effect, that once, once those devices come, this is what happens?
Could you do it, just another suggestion along the way? Could you do an notice that accompanies this? Take that out and say, upon receipt of those devices? Because you want this returned back, right?
Correct.
But what you'd like them to know is that that's part of the policy. So you don't want to hold it back. It needs to already be there, that once they have these devices, they're not going to be allowed to use their own.
Correct.
So what if there were, what if there was an addendum that would include that change? Upon a full implementation of the one-to-one program, these adjustments will be made. These adjustments will be made to this policy, and you can include the phone-use policy too, that they know. Do you know what I mean? So, they have in their hands what will be implemented, the changes that will be implemented as soon as they receive those devices.
That's one way of doing it, yeah.
Right. I know we need this to go out as soon as possible so that when it comes in next week, we have... I just want to make sure that the school committee has the understanding that for that one phrase, that's really not going to go into effect until we have the devices. You know, so I, you know, I'm stating that, you know, we're going to be violating this phrase of the acceptable use policy, but I just want everyone's understanding and knowledge of that.
I think it's efficient to put the language in the front, that upon delivery of school-owned devices,
Yeah, and then it can be part of the policy without having to change or put an addendum in.
So, are you proposing specific language? And what is that?
Upon delivery of...
School-issue devices to all students?
Comma, any non-district.
Upon delivery of...
School-owned...
School-issue?
School-issue.
Is that going to work? Okay. So, the modification is to the computer network and Internet terms and conditions. Page three, Use of Network, item two. The second sentence will begin, "Upon delivery of school-issue devices to all students, comma, any non-district-owned devices will not be allowed to connect to the school network." So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the computer network and Internet terms and conditions, computer care and maintenance and support agreement, and the computer care and maintenance support agreement, acceptable use policy, student and parent's sign-off with the one change that we have just described.
So long.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliotti and seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Any further discussion? Any absence of discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Next.
The next policy that you have for second reading is the update to the attendance and extracurricular policy. You all received the red line document with the changes. The two most notable updates was that parents would be notified day of an absence. And also, we have included the definition for class truancy. The other changes, as I noted, are noted in the may, so if there are any questions.
Okay, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Sunset Berkeley Regional High School attendance and extracurricular policy as proposed. So, move?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Larrabee, seconded by Mr. Villaducci and Mrs. Gagliotti. Any further discussion? Absence of discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Next.
The next policy, which is up for first reading, are updates to the facilities use policy. Just by way of background, the facilities use policy was developed when we opened the new building to contain policies surrounding rental spaces in the, within the building and also the grounds outside of the building. And as a result, we've had the building open now for a few years. We would continue to tweak this document just based on experience that we've had. One of the most notable changes, again, you've all been sent a red line version of the facilities use policy. The changes most notably was to the application process for people looking to rent space for the facility, which you will see on page four. That's probably the more substantive change to the policy, which just gives a bit more clear direction to people that are looking to rent the facilities from the outside. Whether it has an application process, their expectations for the renter regarding hearing back from administration on what, where their application process stands. It also highlights some of the more fees as far as deposits go. So, the summary of fees invoiced require a 50% deposit of a rental. And that they'll also be paid two weeks of the receipt of the approved application. So, there's more language in there as well. And that people that are renting the facility need to be paid up in current on any past rentals as well. And Mrs. Albernaz, is there anything else regarding facilities use that we want to do? Again, the rest of the red lines are changes and tweaks to what we've already had in place.
All right. Are there any questions about the proposed changes? We did discuss this at a previous meeting, and it's on for first reading. So, people will have an opportunity to review it further. If there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the community use of school facilities policy for first reading. Motion made by Mrs. Gagliotti and seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Any further discussion? Absence of discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous.
And then the other two items under policy are the concussion statistics and the bullying statistics, which I will turn over to Mr. Schoonover.
Can we hold on that for a minute? Because we do have some other people here on another item, which is the proposed solar credit agreement. So, if you could just introduce yourselves again. I know you were here previously.
Sure. So, my name is Charles Nutter. Again, we're with Nexamp up in Boston. This is Joe Fiore, colleague of mine, more of a veteran in these affairs. But, so, essentially, you know, it's just a reintroduction of the net metering agreement. We have had a few discussions with Lindsay and Rick about the specifics of the agreement. And if you remember the buffer conversation, I'm sort of making sure that we're not loading up the school account with too much credit. So, yeah, so I guess I'd like to open up the outstanding questions from last time. Any new questions?
Okay, so let me just kind of set the context. We discussed this issue at our last meeting. There were some questions, and there were some issues that weren't totally clear to me. And so, the matter was tabled until tonight. We did that with the understanding that we do have to make a decision this evening because we may lose the opportunity to participate in this particular project. I know the deadline for Nexamp is coming up very shortly. So, there are two documents that are in the packet. And Lindsay and I did have a conversation with Charles and other representatives of Nexamp a couple of weeks ago. Some of this information was provided as a result of that discussion. And Lindsay, I don't know if you have any comments you wanted to make?
Sure. So, you have the original agreement that was circulated at the last meeting, but I just want to, the two, well, I guess the two-page, double-sided document is really the updated Appendix C to that original agreement. Following Appendix C, you'll see that the panels located in C comp will be generating about 3.2 million. Essentially, what we're interested in doing is locking in a buyer allocation of about 26.8%. And then, from there, we would get a 18.5% discount on net metering credit. As stated at the last meeting, we do currently already have a net metering agreement with Clean Energy Collective for 15%. So, this is a larger credit. The landscapes document that you're also looking at kind of ties into what our actual charges are for the year. So, if you look at the left side of this kind of four-column document, you'll see that we spend approximately $320,000 on electricity every year. So, it looks like this. So, what we're looking for is, we spend 319. We have our Clean Energy Collective credit that we have to pay the 85% out to. And then, we also will be recognizing savings of about $47,000 from the installation of the solar panels with Select Energy. So, that leaves about $192,000 still remaining for out-of-pocket costs. What Charles and Joe are speaking about is basically, you know, we would be applying for a credit no larger than $146,000. Essentially, you can't send your national grid bill in a negative. And I understand that there's a concern because, you know, we're hopeful that we will have some more energy efficiencies going forward. And that's basically what the green cells of $45,301 will allow us, a little bit of a buffer going forward. So, it wouldn't push our national grid bill into a negative. We would be taking advantage of an 18.5% credit. Essentially, how the billing goes for net metering credits is you have your national grid bill, you have distribution charges, delivery charges, supply charges, that we have a locked-in agreement with another vendor, but that's also on our end grid bill. And then, you see a credit of, you know, let's say $10,000 straight off the end grid bill. So, basically, with Clean Energy Collective, we pay $8,500 of that credit. So, they're really, we're saving about $1,500 for one month of bills. So, essentially, the same thing would happen with Nexamp. But again, instead of a $10,000 credit, we would be receiving about $1,800 of value versus $1,500. So, it's substantial savings. The Exhibit C that's attached is about $27,000 in savings for utility bills. And that also includes a buffer of about $47,000 in costs that if we ever do recognize reductions in our usage, I feel comfortable that that would, we're not going to cut our utility costs in half. It's just not the way that this building's constructed. Everything's on, as far as the servers, everything. It's just, it's more than the old building for electricity, but it's less for heating. So, it's very energy-efficient with the heating, but there's a trade-off. I guess this is kind of just the final opportunity to let the school committee decide on whether or not we should go into this agreement.
So, just to be sure that everybody understands, on this colorful chart here, it says Sunset Berkeley Regional School, to stick to the top. The number 31910447 is the estimate of what, or the calculation of what we've spent on average in the last couple of years. And the credits that are referred to are not our actual savings. They're the amount that our credit is applied to. So, our savings is not on the CEC credit, is not $79,000. It's 15% of $79,000. And the same with the Select. It says, Saltage, it's actually the Select project that we just put on the roof. So, our savings with them is, what is our savings with them? About 17? 18?
The percentage? It's 15%.
With Select?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the Clean Energy Collective. About kilowatts, we're saving 300, we locked in at a rate of 8%, oh, I'm sorry, 8 cents per kilowatt hour for 360,000 kilowatts.
Right.
So, there's not necessarily a reduction.
Because it's an actual project on our property versus this type of project in the CEC project, which are off-site projects. But what it comes down to is, what the 192 is, is what's left on our annual electric bill that isn't subject to these credits that we're receiving. So, and leaving about a 23% buffer, that means that we have about $146,801 that we have available to apply this 18% savings on. So, again, that's when you refer to the chart. And you see on the chart that the estimated NMC value is 146, and the estimated purchase price is 119. So, we're saving $27,000 if we opt for this project at this percentage. Now, if you're betting, then Mr. Larrabee will go in for a higher percentage than 76.42. So, that's a decision we have to make. I mean, it's actually a better deal than we're getting with CEC. It's, and it's unfortunate because I always thought we had a three-year opt-out on that CEC deal, but looking at the contract, we don't. Because it'd be good if we could opt out of the CEC deal and go all-in with this deal, but unfortunately, we can't. So, the only reservation I have about this is that this technology is developing so fast that, you know, it's difficult to see where, what the situation will be five or seven years from now. I know that we want to be locked in on virtually all of our electricity purchases for 20 years. It's a very difficult call. On the other hand, National Grid just got a 51% rate increase in Rhode Island for, I guess, the cost of production? Is that what it was? Because I know it's not actually a 51% increase in the bill. It's like, but it's between 10 and 20% increase in the bill.
Yeah, as I understand it, it's about a 50% increase in about half the bill.
So, are there any thoughts or comments? I think that's, pretty much covers the proposal. So, we could look forward to an additional $27,000 in savings once this project is online, which probably would be effective for our next fiscal year, fiscal '17.
I guess I guess we'd have some questions regarding the out clauses for us within the 20 years. I know that we have listed, under the terms, could be severed by either party with section in accordance with relating to net metering, relating to termination as a consequence of regulatory change, and then obviously force majeure. But, Mrs. Albernaz, are you confident that our side is protected as far as an out clause within this agreement? And that our interest, as Mr. Pierce said, we are entering into a 20-year agreement that will outlast us as committee members? So, do you have confidence in the out clause for this type of agreement?
Well, if you're asking if percentages change in agreements like this three years from now, we'll really be offering a 40% discount. I can't give you that guarantee. I don't know if Charles and Joe have a different answer, but...
I would say specifically to that concern, this is a 20-year agreement. There's, you know, we'll be clear about that. I will say, and the reason that we enter into a long-term contract like that is because as we... contract like that is because, as we look to finance these capital-intensive projects, one of the big things that we look at, our lenders look at, is, you know, do we have a long-term revenue stream coming in? And that's why, the reason why, today, most of the off-takers for under Act 1, Act 2, and now going forward, have been municipalities because they're able to commit to those long-term contracts. And there's been sort of a good marriage there because we get a long-term revenue stream. The way we structure this is a discount. So, you know, no matter what happens to that National Grid rate, you're always getting that 18 and a half percent discount off the value of the credits. So it's a way to offer the municipality or the public entity a very low-risk way to save, you know, a significant portion of electricity cost. And that's today kind of why you've seen a large majority of public entities in the state do these 20-year commitments. So to answer your question, yes, that is sort of the reality. It's a long-term contract. And, you know, in the same token, we're obligated to be in that contract as well. So we can't change our discount, we can't terminate, we can't, you know, we're obligated to meet the terms of the agreement as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think it would be unfair to ask Lindsay to give a legal opinion on this, on the language of Section 6.3. And we've heard that, obviously, for financing purposes, the provider is looking to have a 20-year agreement in place. The only, the language that is in this agreement that might provide some comfort is the language that says, and I'm looking for it. And obvious, some of these things are obvious, like materially restricts the seller's ability to deliver net metering credits. If they can't give us the credits, then the agreement sort of fails for lack of consideration. Materially restricts the buyer's ability to receive net metering credits or disallows a facility's qualification as a public utility under public cap bodies agree to negotiate. And so the, the language materially restricts the buyer's ability to receive net metering credits. This, one of the situations that is of concern is that there's a pending rate case. I assume it hasn't yet been resolved, filed by Eversource, which is not National Grid, but obviously, which would materially impact the value of these credits to several municipalities that have signed long-term agreements and they're kind of up in arms and have intervened in this rate case, arguing that Eversource's request to, in effect, diminish the value of these credits shouldn't be allowed to occur, or certainly shouldn't be allowed to impact our existing agreements. So the other question in my mind is whether that small moment in World 2 covers that kind of a situation.
Yeah, I think, you know, and that's a concern. I guess that's been raised in the past is, what happens if there's a regulatory change adversely to either party? The way that I read that contract is, if either party is adversely affected by a regulatory change, then we have to come together in good faith and negotiate that. I think that Eversource rate case is, it's interesting because it's sort of a, it's, I think that falls under a regulatory change. If, you know, National Grid, for example, they change their rates every six months. It usually, on average, goes up every year. In this case, Eversource, and you're definitely more familiar with it than I am, the ins and outs of it, but they're consolidating their different rates. And so a project that was on one rate, one rate case, one rate class may now be suddenly, you know, that rate class may be abolished, and they may be on a new one. And I would be very surprised if, if Eversource, if that impacted net metered projects. I think that's something I think Nevada did. It got a huge amount of pushback, sort of retroactively changing the terms of the deal. So I would say, I think Massachusetts is different from that. I don't think National Grid, and I think National Grid and Eversource are quite different. What is interesting on the Eversource rate case is they're actually consolidating the rates, and they're actually reducing some of the, some of the rate classes, which, in a deal like this, if the rates were actually reduced, you'd still be getting that guaranteed 18 and a half percent discount. Your buffer would actually increase. So it actually, in that case, protect you a little bit. And I think going back to that, if, as the rates increase, usually it's proportional. That if our project rate increases, that the costs that the high school's spending, those will increase as well. So, you know, I would just say that we've, we've now done, since the last five years, I think we've done about 30 of these deals, ranging from, you know, the city of Worcester, who spends a lot of money on electricity, to the towns of Donceval that have smaller appetites than this. And we always try to have a buffer in there. And today, we have not had, you know, a problem, I think, in this case. I think that's a healthy buffer. Usually, we have it paid for 15 percent. This is over 20. So I think, I think it's definitely a market. I think it's reasonable to what we've seen in public information and what's out there. So, you know, it's obviously a decision for you guys, but I think precedent is that public entities are comfortable with this type of structure.
Well, and I'm encouraged when you said that the parties might be interested in revisiting if anybody, if either party is adversely affected on this, so.
And I think a regulatory change like that would prompt that. Public information, no.
So. Is there a motion to authorize the district to enter into the proposed net metering credit purchase and sale agreement with NexAmp Solar LLC?
Second?
All right, motion and a second to authorize the district to enter into the agreement. Is there any further discussion? Okay, in the absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we will follow up.
Thank you.
Excellent. Look forward to parting. Thank you.
All right. So now, why don't we turn to the agenda? And so the next item we have is approval of monthly invoices. Does anyone have any questions about the monthly invoices? I saw on, this isn't a question about the invoices, but I saw that we had a couple of invoices relating to virtual classrooms, software for virtual classrooms. And so I was wondering, at a future meeting, it doesn't have to be the next meeting, but maybe even the next couple of meetings, we have kind of a report on what we're doing in terms of virtual classrooms, how the software is being utilized, how many students are anticipating. So if there are any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve payment of the invoices on the two schedules that we've received. Yeah, but I think we really should vote to approve these.
Will we approve by sign though?
Well, we can do it that way, but I believe the statute says that we're supposed to approve these. So I think we'll sign them. I think we should take a vote.
Is that specific, specifically related to regional school districts? Where, was that all, just security?
I looked at the statute relating to regional school districts, and I'll provide a copy of the statute again. But I believe it refers to a vote.
Well, I've already reviewed the bills and actually signed them, so I feel comfortable voting yes. But in the future, I definitely would want to do that prior to a meeting, before I vote publicly, before I, because it could be one or two in there that I disagree. So if we could have them in the future a little earlier before the meeting, if we're going to get a public vote.
Well, we do get them, we do get them in advance.
Yeah, but what we do get is just the line item. We don't get the actual bills. So, that's just, you know, we get a lot more information when you're actually looking through the bills than you're actually getting them on online. And for someone to scan all of those and send to us, it would be multiple emails. But just, you know, just for the future, I would feel comfortable voting in public until I actually review them, if it's necessary. But today, I'll make a motion that we approve the bills, since I've already seen them and signed.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, any discussion, further discussion?
Only, only just that I don't remember voting on these in the past. So I would, I would just agree with Victor that if we are, if we are going to vote on them, we need to going forward, we would probably need the details.
No. Let me just indicate, one of our clear responsibilities is to approve these expenses. And to say we sign them without looking at them may not fulfill our responsibility. So follow on.
So when we get the statements from Lindsay, we don't get any of the backup that comes with it, until we get here.
Right, the backups here.
So I think just by point of order, if we're going to move to voting, if we're going to have on the agenda to vote on that prior to, then we either all have to make it a point before the meeting to go through these and look at the detail. And then we can vote in open meeting, or get it provided to us ahead of time, which may be too liberious.
Is there a way that we could have the formal vote at following meeting? Is that not, I'm just wondering, but it gives us an opportunity to have sign, because we've looked at it individually. But, so there is two agenda items. One is the approval of the monthly invoices for the prior month that we vote on. And the second might be if there are any questions on those that we're looking at and thinking on, so that it gives us a little more time to look at. I mean, we actually meet more frequently than not.
We need to, we need to approve these so that the bills can be paid. We can't, we can't sign, sign an authorized payment and then vote to approve it a month later.
I would just like to get verification on that statute, because I really feel our signature is an actual vote. I don't see why it needs to be public, because, you know, for 12 years, I've been signing warrants, you know, for the K8, K12, and region prior to a vote. So I have a hard time believing, because it's not a formal voice vote, that our signature doesn't mean the same. Because you still need a majority to sign each bill. I would just, you know, for today's purpose, I think we, you know, I feel comfortable voting yes. But I would just say, I think we really need to look into how other districts are doing it, because, you know, I just, you know, it could be just a regional thing, and it's been a while since I've been on region. But, so I don't want to say you're incorrect, or are correct, or I just don't feel comfortable voting on something prior to looking at all those bills. And I'll do that from now on. I'll try to get here earlier and do so, if that's the case. But vote, you know, voting the next following, and even, even if you sign something and take a formal vote the next, the next meeting, I still think that would consider us voting on it. You know, like Julie's saying, if you sign something and then the following meeting, you know, take a public vote, we do that.
So the signing would allow them to process payments?
Yeah.
And, and I don't know, I'm just throwing it out as a suggestion. If the signing would allow us to, to, would allow the administration to process those payments after we've had a chance to look through the backup. And then more for the formality at the next meeting, we would vote on all, all those that we, that.
Or even if we have to change the language on the actual, you know, where we sign, we are authorizing the payment of this, you know, let this be a public record. It is a public record.
It's a suggestion.
What is the suggestion?
That, I mean, we don't, I mean, for this purposes, I think there are enough signatures there that where, there's a comfort level in voting for it. But going further, going in the future, could we look at possibly signing, as we currently do, and we've always done, and that allows the administration to process those payments? And then if it is required at the following meeting, actually have a formal vote, because that would have given everybody on the committee the chance to look through the backup. Unless you think that there's a process where we can look through the backup prior to the meeting. I mean, and I don't know if we have to decide this right now. It's just, that's something we can look into for the next meeting. You know, making sure that the process is due for everyone.
Well, there is also, I believe there was a change in the law, which would allow us to delegate this responsibility to a subcommittee. And I think maybe we ought to consider that.
Okay.
Because from my perspective, signing the warrant indicates that you've reviewed the bills and are approving them for payment. So to me, it's inconsistent to say that you're willing to sign this without seeing them, but not willing to vote to approve, vote in a meeting to approve payment.
No, I know. I'm not saying that. I, whenever I sign the actual warrants, I actually go through them. I always fan through. Do I look at every single one? The answer is no. But I do spot check at least 30 or 40 percent of them.
Or we take the summaries that Mrs. Albernaz sends, and if there's any that catches my eye, then I go back and look for that particular backup within the.
Like a good example of that virtual expense that you just mentioned, if you have a question on it, I would, when the next time I actually get to the meeting, that would be the very first meeting that I would look. I look at things like the superintendent's cellphone, that's a 6535, it's a region paying 35. And then, you know, I, those are the little things that I check every once in a while, because, just to make sure that it's correct. But I also, just like in the K-28 level, I would vote against a subcommittee, because one of each, one of our responsibilities is to review all the bills and to allow a small subcommittee to take on that responsibility and take it off your plate. That would be like saying to the policy subcommittee, don't bring it back to us. You just approve the subcommittee, I mean, the policies. And that's another one of our main responsibilities as well. So I understand that the law changed for that, but I still, I think that's incorrect. And that's why we voted it down at the K8 level.
Well, I think, in defense of that approach, they do, they do review the policies and gather feedback, but it doesn't go anywhere without our vote.
Exactly. And it should be the same.
And so I guess, in what your suggestion is that the committee- And so I guess in, in what your suggestion is that the committee could look through it, but then it's a smaller group that would look through those in detail and provide a recommendation at the school committee meeting to say, we've looked through all of these and this is our recommendation. It would, may still require that we all sign the bills ourselves, but it would delegate the detailed review for the vote in advance. But see, it is a little different Victor because we still look at the entire policy.
Exactly.
Before we make a vote.
It's not like, oh, here's a recommendation and we vote on it. So. I, I would just like to see the statute. I would like to, I, I think we should, you know, for this, like, you know, I think we need more information before we move forward or making any decision because I wouldn't be ready to make any decision today.
But we can vote on these for today.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
With a report to the next subcommittee.
Pardon Minister Flannery, is that?
Ah, so that is a new one. So maybe that's what we do, we better.
All right, why don't we just, if, if it's okay, we have a motion and a second, we can vote, simply vote to approve this tonight. We'll have all of that information at our next meeting and we can decide if we want to pursue it. It can also be discussed at the policy subcommittee. Okay, so all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Utility bills scheduled approval.
Well, in light of the recent conversation, this is going to matter. So Victor's aware, he'll do this at the K eight level. So our utility vendors are really the only vendors that charge late fees. And throughout the course of a month, we can receive bills on, during all different times. So with that being said, the utility vendors, cellphone vendors, water, all this stuff, they assess late charges. If payment is not received, usually within three weeks of the date of receipt of the invoice. So what we were going to do, which is similar to how K 28 allows us to do it, is on any given week, they allow Jeff and I to sign utility bills and get them paid ASAP so that late fees are waived. We can avoid them essentially. But it doesn't sound like that's the, everyone wants to go down, so I don't know if it's worth even the conversation of it. But they annually vote on that for us, trusting that we're reviewing invoices and paying them appropriately.
You know, those are our standard bills in the K 28 level. And that's always something, you know, those are the standard bills. We get a bill. We won't know if their charges is incorrect. This would be definitely something that the administration, you know, this doesn't seem right. We would never know that. We're just checking to see. So that's why we said that did make sense to avoid all those late fees because that was the number one late fee. Everything else we still review.
Well, are we, are we incurring late fees?
Sometimes we do if we can't, with our schedules, the regional school district's schedules, we can't get them signed and issued in time. So yes, sometimes.
And if I consider, that also allowed us not to drive down to central office to, you know, every once in a while Lindsay will, we still do, if there's some urgent ones that need to be signed, especially during the summer breaks. But it, it reduced the amount of times where she sent us an email, hey, I need people to come down, at least three members to sign so we don't incur the late fee for national grid or whatever the case may be. So. And I don't know, this may have never happened here, but in the past, when I first got on, I actually had to go to central office every single week to sign payroll. And that was something that we also just allowed the superintendent to sign the payroll. I don't know about here in the region, but that I bought, and it was every other cycle. The teacher staff was one and then it was ask me group the second week. So it's kind of had to force us to go down. Plus, I don't know how we're doing it now. It's not.
It's different. Everyone's biweekly.
Everyone's biweekly.
Just an ask. It's not a big deal. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, can we roll that into the, looking at exactly, looking at the statutory requirement and how we're going to handle this going forward? And certainly we don't want to incur late fees.
That makes sense.
But, you know, I, I don't recall ever being asked to come in to sign a warrant to avoid late fees, so. Probably easier for me than anyone because I live closer than anyone and I have a flexible schedule, so. Let's just look at these issues and raise it again at the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay. So we've dealt with the proposed solar credit agreement. Status of annual audit. Can we just have a quick update as to where that stands?
For fiscal year '17, the audit is scheduled for November 13th this fall.
Isn't that, isn't that kind of late?
It is kind of late compared to how we've been doing it in the past. We usually have scheduled it the last week of August, first week of September, which has been a terrible idea. School's about to start. They, I'm sure Robin can attest, payroll changes are happening, new staff are coming on, people are leaving. And last year, we had them in and out by mid-September and we still had to wait for our audit reports because the Bristol County pension system, their actuarial valuation, or evaluators were significantly late with their valuation of their pension. We still had to wait like months after our audit was done. So to save aggravation and to plan accordingly, we're going to be doing it the week of November 13th. By then, we're hoping that the actuary for the Bristol County pension will be done, or be in by end of November.
And are we obligated to have our audit done by any specific time for the region?
Um, the state usually wants them by the end of March.
Okay.
So around December, so we've got a little bit of light up, but.
Okay. And so the next item is status of fiscal year 2017 budget and year-end transfers.
Okay, so my apologies with the delay with this. There were transfers that we are requesting FY '17. I've attached it to a double-sided document. Really the heavy hitters are special needs transportation, our legal bills were $24,000. Special intuitions, charter school, I'm not going to read them individually, but you can see where some of the lines went over. Those are the ones that have a negative number in the budget balance column. And there were funds available in lines such as the school lunch program, professional development teachers salaries, that's tuition reimbursement. School choice tuitions, we had a drop the end of the school year, so we were not assessed as much as we had anticipated. And some other lines. The transportation basic routes, the $66,000 is really available now because we received about $60,000 more in regional transportation aid in July, which was accrued to FY '17. Actually, I'm sorry, we received it at the end of June, more than we budgeted. So with that being said, we moved some special expenditures from the general fund to, we have some money in circuit breaker, so we can use that for this school year. So that's why we're using those funds.
So that would be better for us?
Yeah.
So where did we end up with, do you know, do you have a number for where we ended up? These transfers cross, you know, cancel one another output?
We ended with $4,400.
$4,400?
Approximately.
Almost right. Given the size of the budget, just.
That's crazy.
And that includes already encumbering funds for Roger Hatch's work.
Mm-hmm. It includes all encumbrances that, so essentially it's, an encumbrance is something that's been placed to order before the end of the fiscal year but hasn't arrived yet and we haven't received the goods and the invoice yet. So they're still considered encumbered funds.
Okay.
So when do you think all of that will be resolved?
The encumbrances? Sometimes we go up until October before, like something's going back order. At that point, we usually reach out to the coordinators, the middle of September and say, do you still need this stuff? Can we just cancel this purchase order or void it? And they'll let us know that we still need this or we don't really need it anymore. So we'll clean that up before the audit starts.
All right, so could, could we get at some point a, a report of the full budget where each line item ended up?
Sure, I can, I can provide that going forward, every single meeting if you want for FY '18. And then request transfers based on that if that's preferable.
We used to do that.
Well, we used to do that. I, I, that's not what I was requesting. I just wanted to see where the FY '17 budget ends up.
Yep.
It might be good to have that kind of a report, say quarterly.
Okay. I'm going to be wrong.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfers as proposed.
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Field, got seconded by Mr. Flarby. Any further discussion? And in the absence of further discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. All right, the next item is acceptance of a donation of $15,000 from the Greater Forbes Development Corporation for video recording equipment. Your superintendent or Mrs. Albernada would like to tell us about this.
Sure, this, I informed the committee of this, I think at our last meeting. This is from the Forbes Economic Development Corporation. We applied for a grant to support the, the TV production computer equipment that was in our budget. So that would, was actually going to lease it out over three years. It's $19,000 annually. So this, approximately $19,000 annually. So this would pay for a significant part of our year one expense. That was something that we were holding in the budget until we had an approved budget. But the receiving this grant greatly helped us get these in place and order quickly.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to accept this grant in the amount of $15,000 from the Greater Forbes Development Corporation for video and recording equipment.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Giliducci, seconded by Mr. Flarby. Any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, report on concussion statistics and report on bullying statistics.
Okay, so for concussion statistics, you have a document, the first page is an email from our athletic trainer, Susan Medeas, to me, giving an overview of that. On the pages behind it, just so you can see, is the report that she submitted to the state. But a summary of that, we did have, you can see by fall, by season, the total number of concussions that were reported. We, so in the fall, we had a total of 16, most being in football where we had 10. And then you can see one in cross-country, one volleyball, one boys soccer, and then three non-sports related, PE classes, things like that. We had seven in the winter. Now you can see the breakdown there and five in the spring. So I believe it was, we have 28 total concussions this past year and 22 of them were related to sports.
So is there any more detail provided about these non-sports concussions? I'm just, you mentioned PE classes, but volleyball and soccer have one and non-sports has three in the fall. And the same, the same, the non-sports concussions in the spring are
Exceed the ones.
60 percent and the sports are 40 percent.
So these are typically, these are concussions that are happening typically in PE class of a student taking a spiked volleyball to the head. I, I know that happened a few times this past year. Kids falling in, in class and, and banging their head on, on the floor. Those are the types of situations that are happening. Well, we have all 1,000 students going through PE class. We have far more students in PE on a daily and weekly basis than we have participating in sports. And certainly there are non-athletes who are participating in PE class and sometimes accidents, they are happening.
Okay.
Chair, can you have a follow-up and, does someone do a follow-up on all 28 issue, you know, incidents? You know, how are the students doing after, like, do we ever get a report on how they're doing after the concussion?
Once they're cleared to play, there might be check-ins with the athletic trainer. They're not required at that point. There's a lot of checking in until they go through that, there's an entire process where they have to follow until they get that clearance. And once they're cleared, then, you know, all symptoms related to concussion are over. They are 100 percent ready to go. And then after that, there's no more formal check-in, whether or not an athlete will check in with the athletic trainer. And I'm sure she, that she'll ask and check up, but we're not required to do so.
And the non-related ones, I would assume it's the nurse that they would go to or?
Yes.
Would they track repeated concu- concussions for, for any specific individuals or is there a record at some point?
The athletic trainer keeps records on all of this information. So if there is a student who is receiving multiple concussions, she would know about it and track that.
And do we share that information with their physicians in local, whatever college they go to afterwards or?
It's not part of their record that we send to schools, but part of the process is working with the physician. So they have to go see, they have to have that medical attention outside of school and come back, you know, to, to be cleared.
So Jeff, most of the concussions happened at the football level. Does the athletic director and the athletic trainer have assurance that our equipment is up to date and code and?
Helmets are checked all the time. They are up to standard, up to code. Anything that does not meet, we get new equipment. They no longer perform some of the drills that maybe I did when I was playing high school football that would be more prone to causing concussions. So they eliminate some of those drills and practices. But it's, I mean, as we all know, it's a heavy contact sport. So 10, 10 concussions during the fall season. I, I did share with the committee last year the results from a previous year. I, I, sorry, I didn't have that here so we can see the comparison and the trend. But I, I believe the numbers were about 40 total for the previous school year. So we did see a drop in concussions from the previous two years to this past one.
I apologize. I don't have the data in front of you, but how many, someone participated ice hockey? Because it's my recollection, there wasn't that many. So three is, if it's three out of 10.
Twenty.
I think it's three about 20.
Twenty, 25. Well, ice hockey is another sport where likely the concussions relatively high. It's, that is also a contact sport. And, and interesting, I mentioned this at a, at a meeting some time ago because as I was driving to the school committee conference in last November, there was a very interesting program on NPR about concussions. There's a young man who played football at Harvard and who has formed an organization to provide information about concussions and how to prevent them. And one of the things he said was that equipment is not a significant factor in concussions. It's more the way practices are conducted. And we raised this question with our athletic director and she told us that our coaching staff is extremely responsible in terms of the way they conduct practices. Don't engage in those, some particular types of drills that. Don't engage in those, some particular types of drills that really expose players to the possibility of concussion. So, and I noticed that the speaker is from that Massachusetts organization and I'm wondering if that's the organization because the fellow that I heard speaking about it was extremely articulate and very well informed. So it could be that Mr. Francis has obtained a speaker from that organization. If that's the case, I think we have a good program. So I didn't see anything in the packet on bullying statistics, so are we going to?
I just have two quick numbers. We had six investigations of bullying last year at the high school. And four were confirmed to be incidents of bullying. So I know you've asked about that before, just how many, you know, just to get a feel for the numbers that we have here. So that's what the high school had during the 16, 17 school year. And once the policy was updated, I believe it was in March, we did, part of that was also to have additional forms for families or students, anyone to report bullying through a phone line, dedicated phone line, through an email. And we did not have any uses, any reports of bullying through those means of communication.
So we do have a hotline?
We do.
In place?
Yes.
And how do we advertise that?
It is, it's in the bullying information on our website. The phone number to call, a process if they want to have it anonymous to make sure that they have dialing *67 before dialing the number. There's also a form online, a Google form where they can submit something anonymously through that form as well.
And we're required to file a report with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education every year on bullying incidents, aren't we?
It's part of our end-of-year upload to the Department of Ed that includes, you know, in-school suspension information, attendance. It's just part of that end-of-year reporting that our data specialist does. It's not a, it's not a separate report like we just saw with the concussions. It's just part of the information that DCE receives from our student information system.
And how large a report is that?
It's all student information. It's, you know, like I said, attendance, tardies, dismissals, every kind of in-school or out-of-school suspension. It's all the information that's collected.
And when is that due?
It's due, I believe Andrea Smith was working on that for a good chunk of July. Sometime after, sometime before the end of July.
Okay. So under other matters of information, summer retreat follow-up. Gagliotti, do you have anything on that?
I don't have anything. I apologize. I think we wrote up the summary of our discussions and followed that through the full committee.
Okay, well, why don't we just continue that to the next agenda? And I asked that the next item, bus transportation contract negotiations be put on. It was just sort of informational that we extended our bus contract for a year back at the, back perhaps in June. And so our bus contract is coming up again. And I would like to see us begin those discussions as early as possible. So it was just to see if, we have a joint contract with the K-8 school district. And I was, thought that perhaps the next time we schedule a joint meeting, we should have this on the agenda just to decide how we're gonna, how we're gonna approach this. I think the earlier we start this process, the better so that we don't find ourselves in May or June you know, trying to put together a contract. I don't know if there's any thoughts about that.
Well, we can go into the K-8 discussion of our quick report. In Somerset, obviously reading the papers and probably listening to social media. We are really looking at different options for our bus routes. So I think it will most likely affect our numbers. I don't know about the region. But I think I'm asking our administration to look into a transportation director or a sub-director, even a stipend position. Nothing like a permanent role, but we're really looking at data this year to see if we need as many buses as we do or can we do bus stops instead of door-to-door. And we're really trying to maximize our buses with the 53. I don't know if it's an issue here with students, you know, I don't know if you actually have to pass a note if a student is going from one bus to another bus at the high school level. But in the K-8, we're having over 1,000 requests from students to move from one bus to another bus per year. Obviously, parents were very concerned because they do have children doing multiple drops. But I think a lot of the concerns that, of the parents that were at our meeting, I heard a lot of concerns, but I think only two of them it would have affected. A lot of parents thought that children needed to be picked up and dropped off in the same location. That's not the case. It's just one pickup and one drop-off. And not to say that it couldn't be two, but it has to be consistent. And right now, it's not consistent. So, but we're really looking into that. It's gonna be data-driven and, but it will affect the way that the contract is written, so.
Yeah, I think both districts have issues and that's why I think it would be good to start as early as possible with the process. And so, you know, and there's some other things we need. Obviously, with us and our budget, we're ending up with $4,400 left in a, you know, 12 or 14 million dollar budget. That's cutting it close. It's not gonna get any easier, that's for sure. So I think, I think at the regional level, we need to look at this, these issues as well. So, and we are, we are tied together, at least we have been in the past, with the, you know, cooperation between the K-8 school district and the regional school district in terms of busing. So that's why I think we ought to make sure we give ourselves a lot, plenty of time to try to, try to come to consensus that, and then ultimately a agreement with the transportation provider. So I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure if we concluded joint meetings on our meeting schedule this year or not. We should take a look. We did. Okay, so I'll talk to Mr. Machado about if we have issues for a joint meeting somewhere in the future.
If I can, first of all, when Mr. Machado and I were planning the K-8 meetings, he made it a point to schedule, I think, the majority of our meetings, if not all, on the Mondays of the same weeks where we have Somerset-Berkley meeting happening. So we already have the two meetings in one week with the idea that it would be very easy maybe to shift the Monday meeting to a Thursday or whatever so that we could have a joint meeting that way. But the other thing, I would recommend that we, if we're gonna do this, we do this sooner rather than later. We have to look at, one, the year five option in our current agreement. And certainly weigh that against any, you know, what our potential new agreement would be. But also for budgeting purposes, obviously, transportation is a big factor for both school districts, more so for Somerset Public. But we would certainly need to, to know going into budget season, what our transportation numbers are.
Right. So the next item that we have is Somerset and Berkeley K-8 updates. So, Mr. Machado, do you have anything further you'd like to report?
No, I think that was the main key of lately.
Okay, so, Mr. Golluducci?
I'm turning it over to Mr. Larrabee.
So at the last Berkeley K-8 school committee meeting, we discussed the budget crisis. And as many of you know, parents in the town of Berkeley banded together in order to do individual, private fundraising. And in 27 days, they were able to raise $159,000 in private donations for utility costs for the district. That coupled with not having to pay unemployment costs for the teachers that were laid off and the $27,719 that was voted at Berkeley Town Meeting last night to be added to the K-8 budget. As well as a $25,000 renegotiation with South Coast Educational Collaborative allowed the Berkeley School Committee to vote to restore five of the nine positions that were lost due to the budget crisis. So special thanks to all the parents and everyone who spent 27 days, pretty much 24 hours a day, trying to figure out how to fix this problem. Very grateful for everyone's effort. Very important to realize that this is a one-year fix. This is not a permanent solution. And obviously, we'll have to work with our board of selectmen and town leadership in trying to find that permanent solution. But I'm grateful for the triage and I'm glad that, you know, we were able to come up with a solution in Berkeley to mitigate some of the impact on our K-8 school district.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Wonderful, yeah.
Yes, that was an extraordinary effort and an extraordinary response from the community too, so. But as Mr. Larrabee said, it's only a one-year fix, so.
We gotta go to work for that, sir.
I know. Don't ruin the rest for the weird.
All right, thank you. Next, we have approval of minutes of prior meetings. I will entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes of August 3, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Gagliotti and seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Is there any discussion? In the absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananamous. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes of August 3, 2017.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Field, seconded by Mrs. Gagliotti. Any discussion? In the absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananamous. Next, topic's not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. There's, the only thing I would mention under this is that we did have our building inspection this evening at 5:30 in advance of our regular school committee meeting. I was, I for one was extremely impressed with the terrific job that our custodial staff has done in preparing the building for the school year. I thought, I think it's in fantastic condition. And particularly in view of the fact that we had to defer filling some custodial positions due to the budget issues. So everyone stepped up and has done a terrific job. And I'm very pleased to see the way the building looks as we approach the opening of school next week. I don't know if anyone else who was on the tour has anything to add to that. And so as part of our retreat, we decided to include an item on each agenda, which is action items for future meetings. So this is an opportunity for any committee member to raise an issue that should be included on a future agenda.
So I went through, kind of listening to the discussion today, and I'll recommend some that we can consider for the next meeting. We would be looking at the facility use policy, second reading. We do want to have a look at the bill approval policy and a look at possibly the utility approval as K-8 does. So that's another thing that we should do. We do want to look at a fund report on the FY17 budget, if that's available. If not, I understand it might be in October, but that, for us to just keep that on the horizon. The summer retreat follow-up is something. And look at a possible date for a joint meeting where we'll be discussing the bus transportation contracts sooner rather than later.
We've also had parking concerns come a book of times in previous meetings.
Yes, Mrs. Terra isn't here tonight. If she had raised it, I was gonna say, I was sorry that it was an oversight. We'll put that on a future agenda. I did notice we have three visitor spaces here in this lot as I came in this evening. Have those been there or is that new?
For about a week or two.
Oh, so it isn't just?
Yeah.
Okay. I was also wondering if it's possible to maybe have some of the other designated spaces as sort of secondary visitor parking? If someone who does not have an electric car or is not carpooling, utilizing those spaces that are designated for that purpose. But that's something we can, we can talk about. And actually, those action items that you raised, Mrs. Gagliotti, are all things that I think our recording secretary made a note of because they came up in discussions in the meeting. This is, this, those certainly are action items for future meetings. But this is an opportunity for committee members who may have a concern about a future agenda item that we haven't discussed at the meeting, to raise it at this point so that we can consider it for a future agenda. Okay?
And I, there were two other items, the family ID update and virtual high school numbers. And just so you know, it's, at our next meeting, I've invited our two students and Mrs. Troutman. We have two students who achieved a level. They were invited to the Art Hall State, which was in June, really at the end of the school year. So I'm going to invite them so they can share their experience, which was really an overnight program at UMass Art, a weekend program there. So they'll be attending.
And visiting Somerset, she did another grant.
And we can congratulate Mrs. Troutman at that time.
Chair, if we could possibly discuss the possibility of sending a representative to the school council, the government. Does the student government still meet monthly?
The student council, yes.
Yeah, in the past, you know, here we're very fortunate to hopefully get another student to give us a report. But we also in the past, one member would attend one of their meetings every month and would take a vote. You know, just in case if the students had any questions for the school committee but didn't want to come here. I don't know if it's something that we would be interested in doing if, you know, but I, I think Mr. Rebello and I went there for a few times and we got a lot of feedback that we probably would have never known if we weren't there, so.
We're mandated though to have a student.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, and that's something that we've talked about so that what your thoughts are consistent with some discussions that we've had in the past about having at least a subcommittee attend. There's a statute that says that we are supposed to have a student advisory council. And the administration has generally taken the position that the elected student council constitute that student advisory panel. And we've suggested that perhaps we should offer one or two of our members to attend maybe their meetings quarterly to get input from them in addition to having a student representative attend our meeting. And I wish our student representative could be designated sooner than, apparently student government elections don't take place until sometime in October. So.
So our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, September 14th. Do you want to be in attendance?
That's personally, I may, I may be able to attend remotely. But I'll be away for two weeks, so I don't think there's. But I'll be away for two weeks, so I don't think it was useful to come to a meeting. I will be back till the last week of September. Okay. So is there public input this evening? No public input?
Listen, it's the two gentlemen speaking here, they got a meeting before I could ask them a question. There was a big article in, I think I mentioned this last week or last month, the utilities, particularly National Grid, are complaining that they're paying too much back to people for their using the sun catchers. My question is, are all the units on this roof, are they, are they covering, you know, total electrical or a certain percentage of the electrical?
We're producing 300, about 350,000 kilowatts. Is that right? No. Yeah, 350,000. 350,000 kilowatts.
I didn't hear you say thousand. I didn't hear you say thousand, that's why I was like, I don't know.
And that's the solar?
350,000 kilowatts on the roof panel. We're using about 2 million.
What they were talking about tonight, they want you to buy into a new facility?
Yes.
The same kind of deal, a sun catcher, and they'll pay you, and you'll deduct from our bill. Is that correct?
Well, it gets rather technical, but the situation with a power purchase agreement with the system actually installed on our roof, I believe gives us a little better deal than when we purchase it from a, under a power purchase agreement that's located at a remote location. So right now, we're, we're purchasing power, solar power from three separate sources. The system on our roof, a solar field in Rehoboth that we contracted with a few years ago, and now this latest power purchase agreement.
But I wasn't aware that you were using multiple facilities because National Grid said that they are realizing now they're being too generous in what they're paying back. So I'd advise you to have a good look at your, at your contract and make sure whether they could exactly raise the price they give you or lower the price they give you.
Well, yeah, I'm not, they may be, they may be saying that because they know that Eversource is making those kinds of comments as well. I don't think National Grid has ever been particularly receptive to solar energy, so, you know, it's, you know, cuts into their, their product.
Just be aware that the electric light company, in which I worked for 40 years, they're not in business to prepare you for electricity. They're in, they're in business to make money.
Yeah. You know that. We spend $300,000 a year on electricity, so. All right, is there any other public input? All right, in the absence of further public input, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Somerset Teachers Association, Units A and B, and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, clerical and custodial units, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the committee's bargaining position, and the chair so declares. The committee will not return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Second. Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Is there any discussion? Any absence of, absence of discussion, a roll call vote. Mr. Giladucci?
Aye.
Mrs. Field?
Aye.
Mr. Larabee?
Aye.
Mrs. Galliotti?
Aye.
Mr. Machado?
Aye.
And the chair votes are. Thank you, everyone, for coming.